We're on the air.
Okay. The zoning board adjustment for Long Hill Township is come to order at 7:35. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier-News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any mass, any matter past 10:30 PM and any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to moot or turn off your cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Tom, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Yes. Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan is excused this evening. Mr. Gianakis?
Here.
Mr. Flatley is excused this evening. Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Opalka is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Correct?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, we have one resolution tonight. The other one is getting modified and is going to be heard another time. The only one we're doing tonight is the signs CAD book, Doing Business Ads, CAD Signs, for Citizen Bank, application number 23-06Z. Did everybody have a chance to look at that resolution? Anyone, everyone who was here at the time?
Mr. Chairman, I would just quick comment on this one. We received comments from the applicant's attorney this morning, my office did.
Oh, okay. As late as this morning.
Yeah, of course. Nothing like the last minute to raise some additional comments. A very minor change, really just kind of correcting my mistaken math because I'm a lawyer and God knows it. You are not even close. So particularly the change is on page two, the fourth whereas clause on that page, three from the bottom, where it says, whereas the applicant proposes to install a new exterior wall sign on the eastern facade of the unit. The second sentence of that paragraph, they just corrected my math on that, and it should read, the proposed wall sign would feature internal illumination and measure 5.0 feet or 60 inches high and about five foot 11 and 7/8ths inches or about 72 inches wide instead of...
Six.
Yeah. Exactly. So...
Instead of 60, it is what?
No, that's what it's supposed to read, what I just read off is what it's supposed to be. Oh, that is what's in front of you.
That is what's in front of us.
Ours is corrected already.
Oh, you guys got the newest draft. Oh, my apologies.
I was saying, you're reading exactly what we have.
My bad. I'm sorry. I was told that they didn't send you guys the new draft.
That's fine.
My apologies.
Good. No, no, no. It's better you brought that to our attention so we know. With that said, with that correction having been made already, does anybody else have any comments or corrections or changes to the resolution or things that they remember differently? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move.
Okay. We'll call.
Second?
Oh, second, yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Correct, Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Very good. All right. So, the next thing we have coming up is an amendment to a major site plan application, block 10801, lot 1.01, zone B-1-20, 645 Valley Road, application number 21-07Z, DOAR LLC. Applicant proposes to amend their previous approved preliminary and final major site plan. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You can come up here and sit. We still don't have a work, two working mics over there.
I don't, honestly, I don't know.
No, there's only one mic sitting there.
If it's not working, we'll use a portable.
Right. Mr.?
This one has a long line if you...
Oh, that one does, yeah.
Yeah, we can put that one down.
Sort of make do with that.
Yeah, we, both of you could sit down there and just pull that one microphone. You put, no, put that one over to the other side and then pull that one down by, for you. And that way...
Yeah, that's kind of a long line. It's not great, but it works.
Get the job done.
Better than nothing.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me just doing my spiel while they're getting situated here, just for the matter, as a matter of record, I had an opportunity to review the applicant's notice for this application. I deem both the content to be sufficient and the notice to have been timely served. It was certified mailed on August 4th, 2023, and published in the Daily Record on August 4th, 2023, both about 11 days ahead of today's, tonight's hearing, which is more than 10 days as required by the MLUL. Thus, in my legal opinion, the board has jurisdiction over this matter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Now, would you swear in our experts?
Right. So if I can get our two board professionals to raise their right hands, and we might as well get anybody who's going to be testifying on behalf of the applicant, if you all wouldn't mind standing up, raising your right hands. You gonna be testifying, sir? All right, great, yeah. Do all of you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, good. Swear everybody in. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here in beautiful Long Hill this evening. It's good to be back. My name is Derek Worth from the law firm of Inglisino Taylor. Business address of 600 Parsippany Road, Suite 204, Parsippany NJ 07054. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, DOAR LLC, D-O-R, as I'll refer to them this evening. They are the owner of block, as you announced, Mr. Chairman, block 10801, lot 1.01, on Long Hill's official tax map. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of the Valley Road and Mountain Avenue intersection, and as you noted, Mr. Chairman, it is located in the B-1-20 Village Business District. As I'm sure the board and members of the public are aware, the property is occupied by, with the Ancona Bistro Restaurant. The Ancona Bistro specializes in Mediterranean cuisine, and as I'm told and as I've tried, they serve a mean rigatoni dish, which we encourage the board and members of the public to sample at their convenience. So as the board may recall, we last appeared before you in November of 2021, where we requested preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a second story addition with two apartments above the existing restaurant and to install a steel structure with metal roofing over the existing outdoor dining area with related site improvements. The board approved that application and granted D3 conditional use variance relief, bulk variance setback relief with regard to the outdoor dining structure, lot coverage relief, a parking variance, 31 spaces, whereas 34 was required, bulk variance relief for off-street parking in the front yard, and a design waiver for two facade signs. The board's resolution was memorialized in December of 2021. Since that time, the applicant has realized that the second story addition is simply not financially feasible at this time. Given the current cost of materials and labor, the applicant is just not able to proceed with the second story at this time. However, that said, the applicant is very focused on installing the improvements to enhance the new dining area, and this evening, we are proposing some modifications to the board's prior approval. Specifically, as our engineer and architect will testify, the applicant proposes to modify the building materials for the new dining space with double hung windows and shingle roofing on the patio dining area. We are also going to address a minor setback discrepancy in terms of the location of the new dining area improvements. So that's it, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That's what we're here for tonight, a minor modification to that new dining space. In terms of witnesses, I have two, actually a third, if the board has any questions for him. We're going to start off, if the board is amenable, with Bill Hallows, who's our project engineer, and then Bill Kaufman, our project architect. I also have on hand Arlen Pucci. Raise your hand back there, Arlen. There he is. He is the proprietor of the restaurant and who can respond to any board questions if they so arise.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Who's going?
So I know Mr. Hallows has appeared before this board in the past. Would you like him to give a...
Other than the fact that when he gets close to the mic, I'll ask him. Well, hold on. Just want to make sure his license is still current and everything is good. Bill, would you grab the mic? Now, I assume your license is in good standing and you're still able to legally do what you do, right?
Yes, it is.
Good. Then you're declared an expert. We've seen you enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the same as we've seen enough of it?
No, not quite.
Not even close.
No.
All right. The subject property, as was stated, was at the intersection of Mountain Avenue and Valley Road. It's actually the southeast of the corner.
Just for the record, what are you referring to?
I am referring to sheet one of three of the site plan that you should have before you.
Mr. Hallows, this might be a question for Mr. Worth as well. Are you guys planning on submitting any exhibits during tonight's hearing?
We already have.
Bill, Bill has, I believe Bill has a couple of sheets that are not in the packet, but it is not this sheet.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll wait for him to...
Yeah, just want to, if there weren't any, it'd be good to know ahead of time, so I'm not stopping anybody. Appreciate it.
And you're probably all familiar with this intersection. We've got the, well, I guess it's a 76 service station now. You've got the Allstate Building on the other, the southwestern corner. Across the street is a building that has a Mexican restaurant and a physical therapy. And just adjacent to us is the beauty salon with a single family house on the property. And behind us is the new tool doctor, person who is in that building that was just before this board recently.
We've seen a lot of action on that corner.
Well, I'm going to show you some old action that was taking place years ago. This is sheet two of three, which shows the existing building, the existing parking lot, the existing outdoor dining area. And with the previous application, Morris County had indicated that they would approve this application if we put in the stop signs at either...
At the entrances.
At the entrances and exit to the property, and they have been installed.
Okay.
Going to sheet three.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You said the existing patio. When did it become existing?
There, the patio was initially installed, I believe, during COVID as a outdoor dining area. My recollection is the town had some ordinance in place to permit outdoor dining, so it was installed. What we're now proposing to do is to make it a little more permanent with structures overhanging it, surrounding it.
So there was no application or approvals for it except for an ordinance that said you can have outdoor dining?
I'm not sure. I'll defer to my, my professional team on that.
Other than the fact that we gave them the last resolution...
The last approval also.
Which would have allowed that with approval. That was the only difference.
I understand. Will that lead to a different question, but okay. You were talking about existing panels, so I thought I'd ask.
So really, the change as far as the site plan goes to this property is really the the structure of the outdoor dining area, and Mr. Kaufman will address that. There are some questions regarding the setback on this, and when we took the architectural plans and we put it onto our survey, we come up with a front yard setback of 10 feet on Valley Road and 5.5 feet, 5.7 feet on Mountain Avenue. And then I think something that was probably overlooked in the previous application was that the proposed building is 8.3 feet to the arc of the radius that goes from Mountain Avenue into Valley Road. So that's really, I think it's just something that got overlooked in the application previously. And I think as far as that variance goes, I've got, these may be, in our years of working in Long Hill Township, we've done just about everything around this intersection at least once.
And what is that?
Yeah. This is the beauty salon property. That's just adjacent to our property, just to the east of our property.
Bill, why don't you just identify, because I don't think you submitted this on the application. Just identify sheet, the date.
This is sheet two of five of the site plan, has original date of 2000, July 2016, and it was revised up to October of 2018.
Want to mark that? Where do we got to mark that?
Exhibit A1?
A1?
Yeah. That's the site plan for this particular property?
No.
It's adjacent, one to the east.
Okay.
And it was, that's recently been before this board and has been completed since just recently.
How does it relate to what you need for this?
It's really, what I'm talking about at this point, addressing is the setback of the dining area, the outdoor dining area, and the fact that it doesn't change the streetscape here. It's very, very similar to what, what is adjacent to it, what's across the street, what's on the other side of Mountain Avenue.
Right. Obviously, the Allstate Building sits right on top of it.
The Allstate Building, actually, they, they had to jog the sidelines so they could fit the building into, so it wasn't out in the road. It was actually, they worked with Morris County and put a square around that.
The setback to the patio section is eight, eight something?
It's at a curve.
A curve, oh.
Yes, on the curve. It's, yeah, that's like...
8.3. If you look at the, you look, you gotta look at this.
What's it supposed to be?
Well, the setback is 50 feet, but the way the building is, nothing in this area fits the 50 feet. The existing structure had...
It's 32.
I'm sorry, is there a site easement there?
There is not. It's a controlled intersection with traffic lights.
Oh.
So there's another, no requirement by Morris County for that. The next drawing I have is the dentist's office on the other side of Allstate.
This would be, just give us a date for that?
Sure. This is a site plan sheet one of, believe it or not, one-page site plan, back in 1990.
Wow. Dr. Doltz?
Exhibit A2, that sheet one of one.
Dated 19, what, 99?
1990. June of 1990 with a revision date of October of 1990.
And what property is this, Mr. Hallows?
This is, it was Dr. Doltz. I don't know if he's still a dentist there, but it's the dentist's office where you see the tooth out there that was carved out of the tree?
The wooden tooth.
Yes. This is a property directly across us on Valley Road. It's got the, the Mexican restaurant and the physical therapy building, and that building sits at 7.8 and 7.1, so...
We want to mark that at A3 and tell us, identify it.
It's the site plan. It's sheet two of eight, which is existing conditions, and it was dated October 22nd, 2008. And again, I just wanted to just really say that our proposed addition fits the streetscape here. We're not changing anything. There's nothing new.
You're not changing the characteristic of the area?
No, we're not. And that's really, this is, I've already talked about it, it just happens to be the filed map that for the recorded of the Dr. Doltz property. So I think as far as that setback variance, I think we're, we match the neighborhood.
How do the setbacks change for what was approved before and now? Is it about the same setbacks?
Yeah.
Except now it's going to be a wall instead of a roof on it?
Yeah, I think, going from memory, go back. The easterly setback was 9.4 and, and we have 10. And the one on Mountain Avenue was, I think it was 4.7 or 4.9, and we're at 5.7.
So you've got actually...
We're actually a little bit bigger, a little bit more setback.
You have a better setback.
Yes.
Building's smaller then.
Well...
Or the, or the area that you're taking...
Yeah, I think, I think before, I wasn't involved at, at the original one, but I think probably what they, it's not the straightest kind of building, you know, and they probably just measured off the best they could...
Okay.
From what was there, and this is going to be a little bit more rigid structure, so these would be the more accurate.
Were the setbacks taken from the brick patio there? Because basically, right now, we just have a patio there with a temporary roof over it.
Right, and I think there were some columns at the corners, and that's what they located.
Okay, so those are going to be eliminated because you're having a wall?
Well, essentially, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hallows, so in reviewing the site plan, I just want to confirm what the, what the scope of relief is here for the front yard setback from Valley Road. You're saying that's, you guys are requesting a 10-foot setback?
No, I think we really have to look into this 8.3 is the closest one. And that, again, I'm pointing to it, it's in the radius.
Right. Okay, so 8.3, just want to, just so I understand exactly what's being requested.
And then 5.7.
And then 5.7, 5.7 for Mountain.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, just confirming, 5.7 for Mountain as well, right?
Yes.
The board, the board previously granted, I'm sorry to interrupt Bill and Mr. Chairman, a front yard setback of 9.4 feet from Valley Road and 4.4 feet from Mountain Avenue. We have a slight modification of that today as a result of bringing Bill on with the civil plan, and we have a reduction of the setback on Valley Road and a slight increase on Mountain Avenue. Is that correct, Bill?
Yeah, I guess you could call that, actually. The Valley Road is actually the decrease and an increase, you're right, increase on Mountain Avenue.
Increase of the setback.
Yes.
Decrease of what you're asking for.
Thank you.
We're with a minimum setback requirement.
Yeah, we approved a, a, less of a setback than we are, than you're proposing.
On one side, yes.
On both sides, actually.
No. One's going bigger, one's going smaller.
Oh, right, right. What was the one on Valley Road that we approved?
The, the board previously approved 9.4 feet from Valley Road and...
Now it's 8.3, okay. So, because we're taking it from the radius, which we didn't do before.
That's correct.
I think the 9.4 is where the 10 is now.
Right, we're not really changing, and Bill, either of the Bills can confirm this, we're not really changing the structure in terms of location, it's just that we have a civil plan now submitted with this application.
We have better measurements now?
Correct.
Okay. More accurate measurements, okay.
And there would be a correction that I have to do, well, if there's anything else in the resolution, but we show a front yard and a, and a, and a rear yard, and actually this, being a corner lot, it has two fronts. Two fronts, two sides.
Yeah. Any questions by our experts?
Well, that, that adjustment to the, what I'll call the engineered plan for the building itself too, that results in a slight adjustment in the lot coverage as well, correct?
It, it results in a reduction, a slight reduction of the lot coverage.
So maybe, Bill, if you want to just go over those numbers too?
Well, actually, that was also part of the fact that we removed the stair tower.
Right.
So that's...
Yes, the stair tower before, I picked up on a slight reduction in lot coverage where the board granted 64.84% last time. You're at 64.1, Bill?
Correct. That's correct.
Diminutes, basically.
Yeah, it's diminished, but just for the record, I just want to say that's...
They're going in the right direction.
That's one adjustment to this, another adjustment to the relief that was granted previously.
Okay. Any other questions from our experts?
No, I just want to point out that they were before this board initially for, to have outdoor music at the patio, which was not, yeah, it's conditional use, accessory dining is a permitted conditional use, and one of the conditions is you couldn't have outdoor music. In 2022, post this application, outdoor music was, is now permitted in outdoor dining, even though...
But now it's not outdoor?
It's not, yes, but just FYI, so that even, no matter what, the D3 is no longer relevant.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And this essentially functions now as a, basically like an addition. It's a, it's a four-season room.
Is it going, is it a four-season room?
I think the architect can speak to that part.
Okay, all right, okay.
The answer will be yes, we are proposing it to be...
Fine, okay. I didn't mean to overtax Bill.
The only other comment I had in my report, Mr. Chairman, was with what will, I'm sure you're going to hear testimony for the architecture, on the architecture side, what will now result in a conventional footing design is your disturbance will increase at this point, right? Are you planning on replacing the landscaping in kind or...
Yeah, what is the landscaping going to be?
There's a row of arborvitus that runs from the parking lot, sidewalk, to the front of that patio, and if it was, gets disturbed, it would replace this in kind.
So all existing planting is going to be, that may be disturbed, they're going to be put back?
Yes.
And is there any additional vegetation that's going to be put in?
None proposed. I think we...
How about, how about where the 10-foot and the 8.3 is? Is there any, is there vegetation there?
Yes, there is some, and that would be, again, if it gets disturbed, we'll have to replace it.
So what's there now, would, would you consider it adequate to shield from the street?
Yes. I mean, yeah, that's what they tried to do when they did the outdoor dining.
Okay, and that's going to remain?
Yes.
That includes the boxwoods and the variegated holly that's on Valley Road?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. I'm not sure that I heard, but you still need a waiver for parking in the front yard, right? Did you say that one?
No, we were granted the...
Oh, so you were granted, so it's fine? Okay, all right.
The only, last thing I wanted to have Mr. Hallows address, Mr. Chairman, is just parking?
Fine.
If, if I may?
We have parking for 75 seats, and that's the proposal, that we would not exceed the 75 seats.
Did the seating increase, decrease, or stay the same from what you were proposing last time to this time?
It stayed, it stays the same.
Okay. So the amount of seats you're putting in that area stays the same?
Yes, correct. It's 75 seats, whether there's 30 in the new space and 45 in the existing space or some modification depending upon the time of the year. You know, with this, with the, with the new dining area, we have windows that can open up, does provide more of an outdoor experience. In the summertime, we wouldn't be surprised if more people wanted to sit there than...
So it'd be more open area than the current inside?
That's correct.
And your parking, in the prior application, you needed relief for parking because you had to provide spaces for the residential component. With that, with that being eliminated, you no longer need relief on parking, correct?
Correct. We are, well, let me put it this way, we are now compliant, we're fully compliant with the variance that was previously granted. We, 34 spaces were previously required, 31 were proposed, the board granted that free space variance, and 75 seats is, is compliant with those number of parking spaces.
Okay. Anything else?
Two very hopefully quick items. Mr. Hallows, so the proposed impervious coverage, again, just trying to make sure we have everything concrete here, is 64.1%?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Oh, God, killing me, Ed. One other thing, I guess maybe two, if you divide it, I think I'm hearing two stipulations on behalf of the applicant, the first being that any existing plantings that would be disturbed in the course of construction would be replaced, and the second being that seating won't exceed 75 seats? Is that something the applicant's stipulated?
That's correct.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. That's all I have, appreciate it.
Okay, no more, any additional questions from our expert, of this expert, okay? Board members, any questions of this expert?
No questions.
No question?
No.
All right, I saw public out there, but now I don't see them, so they, did they leave?
Yes.
Okay, I, I know I got, I saw them walking out, but I wasn't sure if they actually left. So being that there's no members of the public.
Unless somebody's sleeping in a pew in the back.
No.
Just making sure.
Seeing that there's no members of the public to ask questions, I'm gonna close it to the public. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next witness is Mr. Kaufman, who's our project architect.
Yes, and we've seen a lot of him too. Are you still current in your license?
That depends, does that get me out of doing some of the other things?
No, not at all.
Then it is totally, then it's totally active.
Is that mic still working? I don't see the green light on it.
I think so.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So yes, my license is current and active.
And we, and we deem you an expert, in what we don't know, but.
Thank you, I think with, for purposes of my testimony today, there will be more common sense than expertise. I'd like to just refer the board, I, I had, this will be the shortest architectural testimony in my 30-year career, I think. I have two things to say. I, I, you know, there's not a whole lot of discussion given where we are in the context of this previous approval. The board has a sheet in, in the drawings prepared by my firm, West Sketch, the last sheet, A9, A-901 dot O2, it's labeled renderings on the right side, should be a colored, series of colored photographs on the left, and two renderings, artistic or photographic renderings on the right-hand side. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I did not make copies. So this application, as we've just been discussing, has only two, three significant architectural changes. The first and most obvious is we removed completely in its entirety the second, and I think at one point even third floor, that was before this board a year or so ago, which had residential component and a couple of apartments, and a, an egress stair to the west of the, of the main building. That's the first change. So the existing building that, as you all have seen it, will remain fully intact as it currently exists today. In the space that previously, previous to our last application was an outdoor patio with a temporary cover, that this board approved a permanent cover and permanent walls, that design housed, had a metal roof. That roof has been now changed to match the roof on the existing building, which is a fiberglass shingle in a more traditional style. The skin of that structure, dimensionally, by the way, there's been a lot of discussion about setbacks and moving around, dimensionally, this thing is exactly the same. In fact, the building department issued a foundation permit for this structure some months ago, which we were going, you know, which the intent was to begin building it. So it always did have a foundation. I think in, at some point in the middle of the previous testimony, there was talk about trying to reuse the old walls there, but they were out of square, and they weren't, they didn't have proper footing, so we had known all along we were doing footings under it. So to answer Mark's question, we have, we already have a foundation permit, so we're not changing the building dimensionally at all. It's exactly the same. We've just added some, if you refer to the drawing on A90102, the lower right, A7, for example, the windows that were temporary in nature, that were to be removed and put back in, that were plastic and screened, have been replaced with traditional double-hung windows that match the existing building. And then the corners of those, the building is just clad in brick to match the main building, so there's just brick piers. So the whole thing is a little bit more of a cohesive architectural unit, as opposed to a completely separate, sort of more transparent sunroom feature. And the two renderings depict what they look from, what they, what the building's going to look like, both from as you're approaching down Valley Road, as you're approaching north with the building to the east on your right, and then also across Valley Road on A7, looking directly at the, at the front of the building. The small entry pavilion is identical to what was approved by this board at the previous hearing. It's a little gabled pavilion, has a sort of elliptical Ancona sign. That sign is four and a half square feet, same as was approved by this board in the previous hearing, no change there. The sign that was approved facing the, the west on, that, that originally was located on the stair tower, was 16 square feet on Mountain Ave. That sign is simply being proposed to be installed as depicted in rendering F7 on that same sheet, with the same gooseneck down lightings on the, in the upper gable of the existing peak that faces Valley Road. So no changes to the, to the sizes or dimension, dimensional characteristics, shape, or structure of the sign, just the placement's a little different because that piece where we originally proposed it doesn't exist anymore. And I think that's the entire change. Did I miss anything? Let's see, footings, yeah, essentially, the only change is we changed it, changed the materials of the outside to brick and more traditional windows, and we got rid of the metal roof and the second floor. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So would you say that the building becomes less imposing upon the, the property?
The building will certainly, we're missing an entire floor and a half, yeah, and roof structure, so it's much more in keeping with the current scale and the architectural typology of the existing building. Sands the apartments as well.
And did you, Bill, I don't know if you mentioned it during your testimony, in terms of conditioning that, that new space, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Oh, yes. Yeah, previously, we had, the windows that were designed and approved were these plastic roll-up windows, and they've now been changed to insulated windows, and now we've insulated the walls and insulated the roof, so it can be more comfortable, and naturally, that's gonna bring with it probably a mini-split system that will be able to cool this space a little bit as it heats up in the summertime, and allow them to get some heat through a heat pump in the winter. Again, I think that.
Where is that system gonna be mounted?
The system's gonna, it's a wall-mount system with a remote, remote ground-mount unit, so I think for purposes of this discussion, we don't know, but it'll, it'll more than likely be located on the Valley Road side in that, in that back corner, and we'll screen it with any landscaping. It'll be a very small unit, like a three-foot by three-foot.
You mean in the corner of these two, of the addition?
Yes, in the corner of the addition there, yeah.
In order to do both sections?
Pardon me?
In order to accommodate both sections of the.
Yes, yeah, it has to be in that, in that, and we don't want to locate it in the front, that's visible on Valley Road, so we want to keep it on the, on the, I'm sorry, did I say Valley Road earlier? I meant, I meant Mountain. We want to keep it on the northern, the southern side of the annex.
Oh, so you're talking where the corner of the existing building meets the.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And how big are these units?
The, it'll be one small unit. It's probably, if it's an LG unit, it's like a three-foot by three-foot unit, maybe two and a half feet high, easily screened with.
So that would be screened by some sort of evergreen?
Correct, correct.
I'll take that as another stipulation on the applicant's part.
And obviously, before any plans could be approved, that would have to be shown on the plan.
Yeah, we can have Mr. Hollis include that on the plan.
I mean, because right now, we're, I was a little confused on what corner you were talking about.
Yeah, understood.
We will submit, should the board act favorably on this application, we will submit resolution compliance plans bubbling any revisions from what was previously submitted to.
And, and that would heat the building too, or that would just cool?
Yes, there's, it would, it would work both ways. It's electric, it's an electric heat pump and air-to-air heat pump, so it would heat and cool.
Okay, so that's not, the, the heating and cooling for that portion is not gonna be connected with the main building?
Correct, it'll be a separate zone. Because it's, the, the owners have stated that in the wintertime, that space is not likely gonna be occupied unless they really have a special event or a holiday or something, because it's, it's more serviceable in the summer because they're going in and out of the front door rather than through the small door that, that passes through, and I think it's, you know, go to a restaurant in the wintertime, you kind of want to sit in a more cozy, intimate, warm environment as opposed to a big, open sunroom.
That brings another question up. In order to access that space, you have to go outside and then inside again?
There is an open, there is about a three-foot opening that we're, we're putting in between the two dining rooms, which will have a door on it. It's not indicated on the plan, it's just shown as an open door, but it really.
Is that those dotted lines that are in?
Yes, correct.
Oh, so that's actually gonna be a door?
That's an opening, yes.
Yeah, okay, that would be another thing I'd want labeled as a door.
Right.
Because I had no idea, I thought that was just dotted line, I didn't realize. Because the, the way it looked here, it looked like you had to go outside to go, go in there.
Yeah, I think originally, maybe that was, that was a consideration, and, you know, over, over time, which just seems to be quite impractical to have to go outside if you got bad weather to do this, if you could just slip through the side. They didn't want to lose the table space on that wall, but I think it's important to be able to get in and out in inclement weather.
In inclement weather, cold, things like that.
Exactly.
What face of the building is that on? That's on the, the east, eastern face?
That's the west side.
The west side, okay.
The northwest side.
On northwest?
Yeah.
And I'll take that as another stipulation?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We'll label that as.
Label the door, yeah, I got it.
Is that gonna be doors that are normally kept closed, or those doors would normally be kept closed?
Those doors were normally kept closed because in the event that it's a summertime outdoor dining, you know, an outdoor dining experience with all the windows open and the, and the area and the indoor dining room is conditioned, and the other stuff is off, they're gonna want to be able to keep those separate, so, and have natural ventilation to them, so it'll be closed.
Any questions from our expert?
Is there, is there an entrance to the building on the side that faces Mountain?
It doesn't face Mountain, there is a door that faces south in the corner where the two building, where the building meets the other building. Okay.
The, the public entrance is in the front facing.
Correct, public entrance in the front.
Then there's a side entrance on the east side that's the employee entrance, or the kitchen, right?
Or, yeah, that's, well, that's a different one, all the way in the back of the main building.
All the way in the back is, is like the, the exit for only, employees only take trash out things, but then you've got this other door here that kind of in between the kitchen and the dining room, right?
Right, correct, there's one, there's a door outside the rear of the main building by the kitchen, and there's an egress door. The main entrance is through the front of the building, near the.
Most of the public is gonna be entering.
Correct, yeah.
And they're not, they're not walking around the building on the west side of the building where the arborvitus are?
No, that, that would, that would be an exit door, an egress exit door only. But you don't, you're not gonna have customers coming through that back door or anything.
I don't know, I think it's something like.
You, you have a, is, there would, there's a door that's gonna be coming out?
It appears like there's door or floor-to-ceiling windows in F7?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, those are the doors we're talking about, yes.
Because I don't see it on the plan.
Yeah, they aren't, they aren't labeled as a door.
Yeah, they're on A1, A-111 dot O2.
Yeah, but they don't label as a door, though. I don't see any labeled door going through the outside.
I mean, on my plan, it is, I don't.
Wait, oh, yeah, there's a swing.
Yeah, there's a swing, yeah, it's a single door with two sidelines, two, two sides there, yeah.
Okay, is that?
Yeah, you see that?
Right there?
Pizza slice, yeah.
Oh, that, I didn't, I didn't recognize that as a door, I'm sorry. It didn't, didn't have the, I didn't, it didn't look like it was a door.
So you kind of put the mini-split downstream of that door just so there's no conflict, right?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be, as you're looking at that door, probably be to the left of it there, because there's a sidewalk across the face of the building snug up against the, the existing building, so.
Yeah, well, that's where the heat pump's gonna be, isn't it? Is that where the heat pump is, or?
To the left of the door.
To the left of the door there, yes.
To the left of the door. So it's not gonna be directly in the corner, the heat pump's gonna be.
Correct, it'll be out, it'll be out to the left of those double, right, and that, if you're looking at F7, there's a large brick area, not a large, a brick spacer between the doors and the windows, that's a likely spot for, for that thing to go.
F7, hold on.
Either there or on the left one, either where, wherever we can, you know, properly screen it and keep it away from everybody.
It'd be nice not to put it under the window, but as Bill just indicated, the, to put it along the face of the existing building would require disturbance to the sidewalk, et cetera, so rather, rather leave it on the.
So there's gonna be a sidewalk along the eastern, western side of the building leading to that door?
I think there, there currently is a sidewalk there.
There currently is.
Yeah, that, we're just connecting to that sidewalk.
Okay, all right. So that heat pump, HVAC heat pump is gonna be where that little brick section is there between the windows and the door?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're gonna landscape that?
That's right.
Okay. And what kind of doors, are they gonna be, two doors that fold out? How they, how those doors are gonna work?
There's only one door.
No, it's a single door with two fixed pumps.
Because the way the picture shows, it almost looks like double doors.
Well, they're all the same.
Okay.
And then the one on, the furthest one to the east is operable, and the other two are fixed.
Oh, okay, all right, so it looks like a double door, but only the middle works.
Correct, yeah, it looks like a triple door, yeah.
Triple, right, but only the middle one works, okay.
Not the end one.
Oh, the end one, okay. All right, glad we clarified that.
Sure.
Any other questions from our experts? Any more testimony?
I, I have nothing further on direct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, and I see no members of the public again, so I'm gonna only to close it to the public for the questions, and, thank you.
So.
Any other questions?
I, I have Mr. Kuci here, who's a proprietor. I don't have any testimony for him on direct, but he's available if the board should have any.
Well, why don't you call him up anyway, there might be some questions.
Arlen, come on.
I, I don't want to assume or not assume like board members may have questions for him, so.
You can come, come to this mic.
You can sit, you can actually sit down right here if you want.
Come here.
No, you shut it off.
Oh, I did?
Now, tap it now, I think it should be working.
Red light's gotta be on.
Is the red light on?
Red light is not on.
Just one more time.
That's not the dead one, is it?
Maybe there's no questions, we'll see.
Before we go fumbling with the mics, does anybody have a question for Mr. Kuci?
Yes.
Is his name, sir?
Anybody have a question for him?
Just spell your last name.
Ah, yes, last name is K U C I.
I got it right, okay.
First name is Arlen, A R L I N D.
I got, I got it right, then.
Do our experts have any questions?
No.
Do any of the board members have questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Business address, that's mine.
As for five, Valley.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
I, I do have a question. The door that comes out the back, is that going to be used, or just, that's mainly gonna be just for an emergency exit type thing?
We are thinking to use only as an exit.
As an emergency exit?
Yeah, emergency exit.
So.
That's what we were thinking, so I don't think.
Okay, so that was put back, that was put there so that there wouldn't be just one ingress and egress from that?
Yeah, normally, we'll try to, to use our people from front door.
From the front door?
Front door, because their doors are gonna be close to the restaurant and also this new area.
Right, so what I was concerned with, there's not gonna be a possibility that people are gonna go out there and sit on the lawn at tables?
I don't think so.
Okay. I, I didn't want creep of, you know, that happening.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there will be no outdoor dining or tables set up. The, this area, which is now fully enclosed, is.
Is the extent of?
That's the extent of it, correct.
All right, just double checking, because that door out the back, I just want to make sure that didn't create a tendency to want to have that.
No, that, that's, that's not the intention, Mr. Chairman, and if the board attorney would like to put that stipulation into the resolution.
Took the words out of my mouth, Eric.
Yes, good, thank you.
So at that point, we're not going to see tents up on the grass area?
Right.
Until the next COVID outbreak.
No, in fact, I'm planning.
Lots of danger.
No, then they just open all the windows.
In fact, in, a little bit on this area, I'm planning to, to make some, a little garden.
Oh, okay, so you might like.
Like some fresh tomatoes and stuff.
Okay, like herb garden and tomatoes.
Yeah, just, not whole, but half.
Yeah, okay, that, that's nice. So you pick the tomato that you want in your salad?
That's our plan.
Pick your tomato, that'll be.
It's like picking your lobster.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. All right, so we absolutely sure nobody has any questions for him? Okay, great, terrific. Okay, thank you. So, any other questions of any other of the experts? Anybody have anything come to mind?
I have, I have one question, because this is kind of a, I guess, a new thing, at least for me. In term, this is for our experts, really, I guess. If we've already granted them certain variances, and they're looking for less of a variance, do we have to change that? I mean, they've already had the variance to do a certain thing, we don't have to modify it downward, right?
Right, I, I would say correct, but this is some, a question I had for Steve, because in my mind, to be honest, I think the only real variance they need is, is the one where they were further away that you granted last year, that where it was 9.4, and now it's more 8.3. But I think that Steve sort of, for belt and suspenders, thought that you might as well put, testimony on which they did, for both setbacks, just because it, it's setbacks, just because it, it's, I guess it's a slightly different application, it's, it's not.
Well, it's a different configuration of the building.
It's a different configuration, so that that, you know, that is what they did.
Right. It goes from being a, sorry to interject. It starts, it stops, it's no longer a patio covered.
Right. It's now a building.
It's a building, right, so it's.
But the, but the variance we gave wasn't, didn't delineate what they had to put there, right?
Well, no, the, the variance for the setback didn't, but the entire application did.
So the site plan is different.
Did, yes.
But, and so like, same thing with the lot coverage. We gave them a variance for a certain lot coverage. They're actually under it.
Right.
So do we need to actually downward, like modify the lot coverage, or do we just keep them with what they have, and if they happen to be under it, that's a good thing?
Well, being that it applies to a different site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess it theoretically is debatable, but erring on the side of caution.
All right. I have no problem either way, I just didn't know.
Can I just actually ask, but this is really just a theoretical or hypothetical, that if, in the future, they decide to go forward with the second story, do they have to come back?
Yes. Yeah, they would.
Okay.
Because the building itself changed. They no longer have a patio. Now it's a structure.
Okay.
And they would have to show how that second floor impacted on the structure they have now.
Well, that's if they proceed, you know, provided the board approves this application, they proceed to create the new improvements under this application, and I think so. Are you suggesting if they don't do this one, the proposing right now, and then decide to do what they were originally?
No.
No.
They do what they're going to do.
Right.
And then later on, they decide they want a second floor in addition.
Right, yes, then, yeah, absolutely.
It would have to be a whole new.
They'd have to come back, okay.
Right, right.
Because it's a whole different building.
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right. No additional questions? Great. Would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I appreciate, and the board professionals.
Oh, before you do, there is no member of the public that wants to make a comment? Closing it to the public, sum up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief. It's, it's August fifteenth. I thank everyone for coming out tonight. I appreciate everyone's time and attention. I know everyone's got vacation schedules. We appreciate your consideration. We're really looking forward to hopefully getting the board's approval on this, improving this new dining space, which will enhance the existing restaurant, and I think improve the customer service, plus the, you know, just the location that diners can be in, here in beautiful Long Hill. So we thank you for your consideration, and we ask for your approval this evening.
Thank you. Tom, would you like to start your bid direction?
Of course, I just took a mint, so pardon.
Right, exactly, before I asked.
Considering the changes, and considering our prior approval, I am more in favor of this application than the last one. And since I voted yes last time, I am in favor to vote this, yes, this time.
Great. Gary?
Um, yeah, I kind of fall in line with that, although there's some drama of the other one, and the staircase, that I kind of liked what it did to that side of the building, but that's not the application we're approving tonight, so I'm inclined to approve the one we have in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Gary?
I think it's a good application. The, their professionals did a great job. I, I don't see anything wrong with this. It can't hurt the environment. It's an improvement. It's improvement to that space. The changes are very insignificant, so of course, I'm in favor of this.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I, I agree. We already approved this once, essentially the same footprint and everything, and I, I don't see any reason why I would change my opinion of this now.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Counselor.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Please.
He spoke of putting in a garden, a vegetable garden, herbs, tomatoes. Do we need to put that in this approval at all?
Please, no.
I don't think so, but now's the.
I don't, unless the applicant wants to stipulate to plant a garden, but I'm.
Just wondering, sure, because now's the time.
Yeah.
If it's not allowed, I, I'd love to know.
No, I, I don't think it's covered.
It's quite the opposite.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I guess.
You're going to make your.
You might want to put in that the applicant stated that he, that he, that he's, that made plan on putting a garden.
Well, I guess the ultimate question is, would your vote on the application, one way or another, be swayed if they would agree to, you know, plant the garden?
No, but I just want to make sure if he needs permission, he gets it today.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what he meant.
Oh, I don't, that's completely.
The planner, you don't.
I don't need that one, right, let's.
It's, it's not, I mean, it's not a slight plan. I mean, it's not impervious, it's, yeah.
I mean, that's a good question.
No, it is.
We don't want to hamstring them if you.
Right.
So, all right. I, I feel the same way as my board, fellow board members. I think this is a nice improvement to the property. It does kind of finish the building, and it makes a little more eating area. It can be opened up with those large windows in the summertime to be similar to outdoor, but not quite. They can be heated in the winter if you need it. It's a little more seg, separated from the roadway, so it won't be as noisy sitting out there, which is nice. So I'm in favor of it, so if you want to.
Sure. I will summarize to the best of my ability. If I get something wrong, if I leave something out, as always, feel free to correct me. Right. Okay, applicant is D- Door LLC, I still can't get over that name, seeking amended site plan approval in three bulk variances. First bulk variance being front yard setback from Valley Road, fifty foot, minimum of fifty feet is required. Applicant proposes eight point three feet. Second is front yard setback to Mountain Road. Again, fifty feet is the minimum, five point seven feet is proposed. Impervious coverage, forty percent is the permitted maximum in the zone, sixty-four point one percent is proposed. Then a few conditions. First from Liz's memo, amending the zoning table on the plans. I think Mr. Hollis spoke to this during his testimony, as far as adding the side yard requirements and the, I'm sorry,